Well, I think, uh, game is about five.
But Lizzie went to work the other morning, it was minus twenty-six when she left the house.
Really?
She's in Cleveland. That was it.
And you get all that.
Yeah, and they don't have any snow anymore, it's just the cold. Yeah, she said I've got, she said she has three feet of snow.
Okay, I think that it's, uh, the five o'clock hour, and I would like to call the meeting of Gilmore County Board of Education order, and, uh, Dr. Armour is willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We moved it, sorry.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would like to take the role of Ms. Hurley. Um, Frau Armour, here. Ms. Pritt.
Here.
Tom Ratliff.
Here.
Okay, we're all here and accounted for. The third item on our agenda, reports, discussion, follow-up action.
Mr. President, before you do that, I'd like to interrupt with an ask. We could possibly, uh, change the agenda and bring the delegation forward at your choice, either before that or after, before we get, so that they do not have to wait for the end of the meeting. It's been done before. If you recall, uh, that was done back when the, uh, shooter training for the high school, emergency training was done, and the amended, agenda was amended, and you let them speak earlier because of timing. Do you have a problem?
Uh, I don't, as I said at the last board meeting, I don't have a problem with it. If the board has no objection, then, uh, Mr. Devano, if you don't have...
When I talked to the state, they said it would be up to my discretion, and I have no problem moving it, but as long as it doesn't disrupt meetings and stuff like that, that we can keep, we can adjust it if you all agree, and if the board agrees, we'll move it.
I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to bring the delegation to the front of the meeting at present discretion, either before or after the review session.
Second. All right, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Okay, we will go then to delegations, and again, I will remind, um, those who have signed up to be delegations that we have a limit of time from three to five minutes.
Let me get a point of order on this two delegations. The last meeting, it was said that the board could adjust times if they want to, that's not correct by your policy.
Mr. Devano, I take issue with that. Uh, I have checked on that, and if the board makes a motion, and two-thirds of the board or majority approves, then it can occur.
If it's your policy to have two, three minutes.
Our policy says we can use the robbers' rules in order.
Three minutes is your policy says, because we read the policy, you got three minutes to do delegations.
That's right.
And the only time the, the board can adjust anything else like that is if you have a delegation that comes in here, and the delegation has five or six different items on the agenda.
When did that policy become policy?
When you guys approved it in July.
Because the previous policy was...
We went back to read the policy two or three times.
Of course, I didn't see the, I didn't see the previous policies, because I had asked for them, didn't receive those that were issued, but it was ten minutes. So, the state law adjusted it to three minutes, is what you're telling me?
It's a, uh, it's, your policy right now says three minutes, and the only time you can adjust anything at all by that is if it's a delegation that comes in and has six or seven items on it, that you can ask, that, uh, they combine it, and they can talk, as long as it's on that same item, that you can adjust time then.
Is it possible for a future, to put it on as a future redundant agenda date to a discussion, to amend that policy to, uh, you know, five to ten, or whatever, you know, something within three, three is hardly adequate, uh, in my opinion, but is that possible?
Only three to five minutes to, to make, this, as I understand delegation, it is not a discussion, it is a presentation of an item of interest or concern.
It is.
And three to five minutes should pretty well cover it.
You called the five minutes we spent down in Charleston. We've only permitted five minutes, and as you well know, when you have a subject that, uh, we certainly could have used a little bit more time, five minutes, I mean, we did a good job, I thought, we, we tried to cover everything, but, you know, you did your five, I did mine. But, you know, I felt, I would love to have had another couple of minutes, I don't know whether we have any flexibility if someone has an issue.
Not, uh, with the state board, it's five minutes.
Right, but I, well, this is three, yes, I understand it from Mr. Devano, so maybe...
Then I said three to five, I think if a person isn't finished in three minutes, we, it, with reason, we ought to allow four or five minutes, so I have no problem with that.
Well, I mean, you just stated that we could only reduce it because I, you know, you're wrong.
Three minutes is in your policy. Okay.
Mr. Devano, uh, we've changed policy before, uh, we changed policy on field trips, so, uh, couldn't we have this as an agenda item to talk about changing the policy?
That was what I was just saying, you know, in the next agenda, perhaps we could ask to have that put on and discuss, and see whether or not it is the board's will, as an entire board, you know, to increase it to the five minutes or, you know, whatever amount the board's...
You can bring it back as a, as an agenda item, but then they've got to go out for three readings or anything like that?
What I understand is proper, proper.
Wouldn't that three readings and changing the...
No, we didn't, we haven't, but I'm glad to hear that we're going to have it, that's good. That, that makes me very happy, that is the proper procedure, because I'm aware of it.
Yeah. Okay, well, then, we're ready. Um, we, uh, we did vote to have delegations to occur earlier on our agenda, it was all unanimous, and we'll deal with the issue of how many minutes as an agenda item for the next meeting, as I understand it. All right, well, at this time then, uh, we will call on those who have signed up for delegations. Uh, first of all, Bob Hardman, Gilmore County Lodge number one, one eight.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and what I'm here for is to, uh, I guess, ask if the board would be interested in the Masonic Lodge to set a cornerstone for the new elementary school that's been built. As you recall, we set one for the Leeding Creek Elementary School back last May, I believe, is when, when that, uh, was set. The cornerstones are actually set by the Grand Lodge of Masons of West Virginia, it's typically done in public buildings, you'll see oftentimes in new schools throughout the state, or various states, um, it'd be set, they can be set in federal buildings, they cannot be set in private buildings. Um, I did not have an opportunity to look at this building, but I'm thinking there was a cornerstone for the original Blumbill, uh, Blumbill High School Elementary School that, and there may be some in some of the other schools in Gilmore County, I'm not sure, but, uh, we knew that you were going to be building the new school, and we wanted to see if, uh, the board was interested in the Masonic Lodge having a cornerstone ceremony, set a cornerstone. Now, there are only, got two different ceremonies, which will see any of the Masonic Lodges out in public, um, doing any kind of public ritual. One would be, uh, most common would be a funeral for a fellow Mason, and the other would be setting of a cornerstone. A third, and it's not done that often, would be the opening of a casket that goes into the cornerstone. Each cornerstone will contain a casket containing a time capsule, various items, uh, relevant to, to the date or the time that that cornerstone, cornerstone is set. There's actually a cornerstone casket that's going to be opened at the old street at Nova High School, I think that's scheduled for, uh, March or April, and I'm not sure exactly what the date is, but typically those cornerstones are, are there for the duration or the life of that particular building, until that building's demoed or a major renovation that would take that particular corner out. Um, I know several of you were at the cornerstone setting ceremony for the one over at Leeding Creek, we appreciate your attendance there. Um, I know there were some questions as far as the cost, typically the cost of cornerstone is about twelve hundred dollars. Um, neither Gilmore County school system or Lewis County school system contributed toward the cost of cornerstone there. Uh, the one at Lewis County, or the Leeding Creek Elementary School, when the former superintendent personally paid, I personally paid, uh, there were other, a couple other individuals personally paid toward that, and then I'll collect the donations from around the county, or both counties, to go toward the cost of that. Um, I believe the reason being, there wasn't anything in the budget for the building at that time. Um, that would again be the, uh, consideration if the board would be willing or interested in donating toward the cost of the cornerstone. Um, again, there would be a casket that went in, that would go in the cornerstone, and we would go around the county collecting different types of information from the county commission, um, different businesses throughout the county, um, from the county school system, just anything that'd kind of give a, a reflection of what Gilmore County was like, or what the area was like at, at today's date, and then at some future time, uh, in a hundred years, or whatever, how long that new building would last, um, then they would, when that building's demoed, they'd take that cornerstone out, take the casket out, and then open it up, and it could reveal what, um, what was deposited in the casket of the cornerstone, and kind of, again, give a reflection of what things were like in Gilmore County at that time. Um, I probably won't over my three minutes, but I would do. I didn't bring a lot of information with me, uh, but I'd be willing to ask or answer any questions, if I don't have the answers today, I'd be willing to get the answers and get them back to you in some form. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hardman.
Yes.
I spoke to you in several back discussions in the former temporary...
It's normal, point of order. You cannot engage a, a delegation.
I disagree, the board committed to ask questions, but it's not, it's not a back with the Senate, and it does, I believe so.
Not on delegation, but we have to just listen and go on.
Uh.
But I'd like to bring back, you know, the next board agenda to talk about the cornerstone.
Will Mr. Hardman be present at that time to answer questions also?
I can, I can come back, yeah.
Okay.
We'll make that part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
As part of the record, I'd like to state that the rules are that the members of the board can ask questions of clarification, but they can't make comments or promises or something that you understand, like ask questions.
Or have a conversation leading to a vote?
So, we can't vote now?
No, we certainly can, and we can have a conversation that will lead us to a vote. That'll have to be clarified, but I do believe that's in writing, and I think it's also...
Rules are rules, and we can read.
It is, and I think it's also in the, um...
Okay. All right. Could I say one more thing? If, if the board would have any questions, and I don't want to be out of order with the board, if you want to fill those questions to the present board or to the superintendent, that they could get to me, then I could, you know, give me an opportunity to get the answers to those questions, and I'd be more than happy to come back to the board.
That's what you were going to make comments, that's why I just thought just that on that.
That'd be great.
But I'll bring it back and let you have it, put it on the agenda, then you can have the discussion with the board.
Right, that'd be great.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
The next delegation, Phil Stark.
And you're allowed to vote if you want to. We always do, did that when I was, and I'm sure they would too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Devano for, uh, discussing the, sort of, one last board meeting about the, uh, snow days between Calhoun and Gilmore, and done a, had a good, very good job of trying to take care of the students so that they could be in both of them, and I appreciate them. I'd like to discuss, what I'd like to discuss is the executive station, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I was on the Board of Education for twelve years, as all of you know, for eleven and a half of those years, but we've had no problem of going into executive station, coming, telling why we went into executive station, coming out of executive station, voting to, uh, come back out of executive station, go back into the regular station, and statewide that we were not, uh, that we would do something in that. Uh, if the last time I was here, I can safely say that that wasn't done, as far as I'm concerned, under any orders, and I did check this, and I discussed this with two board members, and also discussed it with Mr. Devano too, it's not something he's not aware of, that, and I asked Charleston and different places and different attorneys, and there's, you have to tell the reason you're going in. I know when, uh, back, when we got a new, uh, president, right after we got a new president, we were taken into executive station when Mr. Ramison objected vehemently about going into that executive station without them telling us why we were going in. Uh, some of you board's members, you'll remember that. We went in, and the whole thing was to take on me, was to tell me, as Mr. Simmons said, you're trying to take over the Board of Education, and I said, you can't take over something you don't have. And then it went to Mr. Rep, uh, Mr., uh, uh, can't even remember his name now, but, Mr. B., we called him, uh, he came back and told me, either I would stop asking questions in a board meeting, or he would never allow them to give our school system back. I mean, when we came out, we voted to combat an executive station, and go back into public station, and then I told them why we were in there, exactly why we were in there. And at that time, I told also that our superintendent, if he would quit, I would, and we both did, and everybody was happy about that. But what I'm saying to you, I had this problem before, under the new president, where I was not allowed to vote no on different things, and I've noticed that same things happened to your board. If you're going to have a board, and you're going to have a robust rule of order, you should abide by that. You cannot have it any other way. You've got to make those things, and you've got to stick to it. Now, in defense of Mr. Simmons here, I made the mistake several times, and so Mrs. Pritt will say, and she probably did, of forgetting to take a vote, because they would be disgusting and so on, but I could always depend on my board turning around and saying to me, you've got to vote. Thank you, thank you, and I would say, you vote. You all can't be afraid to say to the board president, you forgot to vote, and I would have to say, Mr. Devano, you did say, we've got to vote. And it went on, but we, the vote wasn't taken, you're still in executive station. And that can't happen to you. But I remember at Little Elementary, where I was told, when I said I wanted to vote no, and there was no vote taken. You've got to take a no vote. You cannot only take a no vote when the president wants his point, but you don't have the same point of view, everybody has a different one. And what you've got to do is stand up for yourself and say, no, I want to vote no. And you've got to ask for that no. And I can remember Mr. Simmons, and you would too, when I said, I want a yea or a nay, and you said, there's no such thing as yea and nay. And I said, well, they've always been in my rubbish rule of order, but you must go back and do these things. You can't have the county people looking at you and saying, nobody's voting no. Well, you're not getting a chance on that. I'm not saying this happens all the time, I'm saying it's about happening, and it won't hurt any one of you to turn around to Mr. Simmons and say, you forgot to say the no vote, or you forgot to vote. I mean, we had that happen to us, and we were very nice about it. Thank you.
All right, next, Kyra Annen.
Hello, my name is Arianna Annen, and I'm academic coach, instructional facilitator for Gilmore County Schools, and I'm actually delegating tonight on behalf of a Title I teacher that was going to delegate at the previous board meeting, but since of the rescheduling, could not make it herself. And I would like to make a corner note, a side note, that we have excellent Title I teachers, and I'm very proud of our Title I program at Gilmore County Schools. This is from Ms. Kara Foster, and she is our Title I teacher at Glendale Elementary. This is to the Board of Education. Good evening, my name is Kara Foster, and I'm the K through six Title I teacher at Glendale Elementary School. I want to thank you for all you do to help the children of Gilmore County Schools. We ask much of ourselves and of you, and we all know there are times when we wish we could do more. Tonight, I'd like each of you to do something personal. I would like for you to do it with me as well. I would like for you to commit to read to children at Glendale Elementary School on March second, two thousand and fifteen. March second is the anniversary of the birthday of Theodore Geisel. He's better known to most of us as Dr. Seuss, the author of The Cat in the Hat and many, many more wonderful children's stories. His books have led generations of children to discover the joy of reading. On March second, to honor Dr. Seuss, the Nat, the National Education Association and Glendale Elementary School are sponsoring a celebration of reading we call NEA's Read Across America Day. We would like for you to join us by endorsing this program. We would like for you to all personally commit to reading a Dr. Seuss book to children on March second at Glendale Elementary from ten to eleven, to celebrate the joy of reading Dr. Seuss's books and his one hundred and eleventh birthday. In addition to reading to the children when you come, I please ask that you judge our Dr. Seuss door decorating contest. The winning class will receive thirty minutes of extra recess, and the teacher will get thirty minutes of extra planning. If you plan to participate, please email me, cm-salsbury-k12wv.us, and I will provide that email to you, or call me, three oh four, four six two, seven three three eight, on or before Wednesday, February twenty-fifth. And she and I spoke, and we knew that that was kind of impossible at this point, so she said, just let her know by Friday, this Friday, the twenty-seventh. I look forward to hearing from you. Also, please let me know if you would like to eat school lunch that day, so that we can get a head count. We know we work together as a community to encourage our children to read. To quote Dr. Seuss, the more you read, the more you know, and the more you know, the more places you'll go. Thank you, Kara Foster. Very nice. And here is the sign-up sheet, so I'm going to go ahead and pass it around, and I will also provide that email address to you. And again, she's going to extend until Friday, so thank you all very much. I know that all of our schools are having events, but she wanted to delegate personally and could not attend.
If you have the opportunity to eat with the students, if you do, that's the biggest thrill, when they see an adult sitting there with them.
Good.
But thank you, and that was all I had to share.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item three, reports, discussion, follow-up action. Um, I know superintendent and I have spent a little bit of time in the Capitol, uh, last few days, uh, there are a number of items of interest that, uh, are moving through in the way of bills that will impact public education. I think, uh, one of the things, uh, Gabe, that I picked up is there's a lot of negative attitude towards state board at this time, so if we've got anything that can, uh, be done to help us, now's the time to do it. I wanted to, uh, to tell you that one of the things we had, had a meeting on was the Leeding Creek School. I guess, over the last several months, one of the things that, that I've been struck by is about misinformation that's traveling around about the Leeding Creek School. Uh, some of it is, uh, you know, ignorance of facts, uh, some of it is deliberate misinformation. You go over to Lewis County, you hear one thing, if you're here, you hear one thing, if you go to Charleston, you hear another thing. And I think I finally decided, after I read, uh, House Bill thirty-one sixty again, and the memorandum of understanding, until laws change, that is our law, and it's pretty clear to me. Now, there are changes that are needed, and our legislators are aware of that, and, uh, when we start talking about all the obstacles to that school actually succeeding, the response was, the building's built, you all agreed to be a partner in it, failure is not an option, because this school is going to be one of many inter-county and multi-county schools in the future. Money is not there for a school everywhere that people would like to have them, and I think, uh, you know, the state's being forward-looking and, uh, wanting to help us make that school work. And I talked with, uh, superintendent about it, I think we need to have a special meeting, a special board meeting on the Leeding Creek School, and at that meeting, we'll have it with Troy, uh, we need to clarify the issues that surround that inter-county school, uh, from the inception of the idea to the current situation, because folks, next fall, that school opens, and there's still unanswered questions. And like it or not, we're, we're a partner, and so there are some things we need to do, and some things that need to be clarified. And I hope that when we have this, uh, special meeting, that we will bring everyone up at least to speed on what we know at that time, and I think we're going to know a lot more. I think House Bill twenty-seven fifty-five is moving. That bill, uh, with the help of our key legislators, will answer a lot of the questions that we've had. I think no one wants us to be penalized for sending students there, and I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're going to get a bill that addresses the current situation. I think that, um, you know, soon, we're going to have that meeting. There is another bill of interest, House Bill twenty-one forty, which limits state intervention in counties to five years. Uh, I said three, because I think in three years, if you can't fix a problem enough that we can move on, then there's something seriously wrong. But, uh, you know, through compromise or whatever, there is a bill that will put a five-year limitation on, uh, state intervention of counties, unless they're just, you know, extremely extenuating circumstance. I think, uh, listening to folks in Charleston, there is one other item that we need to, to consider, and I think Dr. Armour is going to say a little something about this later, but again, we need some time in the next couple of months to have a special board meeting in which we talk about a vision statement for Gilmore County Schools for the next five years. I know we have a CEFP long-range plan, a ten-year plan that's been submitted, but that's a plan. There's a difference in my mind between a plan and a vision. We need to all understand what it is that we expect our schools to be. We're going to have a half an elementary school, a full elementary school, and a high school. We should be able to say, five years from now, this is what we hope to see. Here's what we hope to do with achievement. Here's what we hope to do with involving parents, everything that makes for a successful school system, and I think that this would be time well spent. What do we want our schools to look like in twenty-twenty, five years down the road? Um, I know that I've not done well in my own personal life if I don't have some kind of plan about where I'm going, and I've often said, sometimes we run our business like I build on the farm. I start building, and then I make my plans as I go, and, uh, some of the things I've built are, show that, there's the evidence is there. And I think that we owe it to people in the county to be able to say, you know, in the next three to five years, here is what we expect. Uh, I, I think that we have to talk about it before we can talk about it with the public. Now, I've got one other item, I keep reading over the past few months about the board presidents charging five thousand dollars in expense for travel and, and meals. Uh, if I were going to defraud the county, I would find a much more imaginative way to do it than meals and miles. The actual amount for travel, lodging, and the whole business for twenty-fourteen was sixteen hundred forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. In twenty-fifteen, the amount is three hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Whoever's hallucinating with a five thousand dollar travel expense for this board president, get real, because, you know, Wendy's don't have real high, real pricey meals. Shoney's not real pricey, so I'm not eating hundred dollar meals anywhere, and, uh, I get the same mileage everyone else gets, even though that Chevy of mine does use a lot of gas. So, I want to put that to rest, and in fact, when we get this all, I'll, I'll just itemize it, I'm going to have Mr. Ramison to run it in the free press.
Should we have a point of order here?
Yes.
We're off task here. We're off ta, we're off task on our recording, we need to get back on track.
All right, well, I, I wanted to, to clarify this, because as your board president, I've been accused of padding my expense account.
I, I certainly understand that, but we need to get to the business at hand.
I, I agree with you, but I've read that so many times, and I, and it comes from the same writer, but I just want to get it clarified for the public. All right, uh, reports and follow-up. Dr. Armour.
Can I comment on your, um, report?
What's that?
Can I, I'm going to ask a question about your report.
All right.
Um, you spoke of having a vision, and I agree with that. You spoke of having a vision and I agree with that. However, you do, or maybe don't. Let's just say this, we have not done the annual goals for this board yet.
Oh, yes. We have three.
No, that's on the strategic plan. The board goals, to my knowledge.
We had three. One was to get off of intervention. One was to get our facilities issues settled.
But when was that done in a public meeting, Mr. Seuss?
Well, Dr. Armour, you recall, the academic improvement was one of them.
If you permit me, I think what I have to say here will probably feed into what you guys.
Okay.
We had a conference in Charleston and Mrs. Prit and I attended. We didn't get to complete it because of any weather on the second day. We were just missed and had to come home. But it was one of the most important conferences I've gone to. And Misty and I talked. I'm gonna try to give some of the highlights and she can chime in any ground while I make a mistake of prayer. We all know what talking points you're all about. We'll hear the politicians get up early on Monday morning and the first one will have a talking point. Then we'll hear the secretary of state. He'll give the talking point. Then we'll have the head of EPA. He'll give the talking point. And then we'll have a press conference and someone will say, "I have a question totally unrelated to the talking point." And the person running the conference will say, "I'm glad you asked that question." Let me, Mr. Companions, you're asking that question. Someone would need to ask it. And then instead of answering the question, they go to the talking points. We see that all the time. Okay, there were talking points at this conference and they were repetitive. It's about each person who got up and spoke, used the same phraseology as if they had all got together and concluded what they were gonna say. So what I'm going to do is talk about those talking points. Now, before I go into that, you know, we can talk about what we can or cannot do. We are bound to adhere to the statutes of the state of West Virginia and the rules and regulations. If one person comes up with an assessment that we don't have to do that, I just urge them to refer to the statutes so they won't be charged with a misdemeanor. Okay, I confirm that the board has authority for all finances excluding those for construction of new facilities and personnel. Now, this includes improvements at the schools and the HVAC system at the high school would be under that. Mr. DeLano has already engaged Williamson and Shriver. But I just urge him from here on out that before any decisions are made, the board be engaged. The other thing is, the board has the legal authority to use the county's funds to go to Bowls and Rice to get legal counsel. So if we're told something and we don't agree with it, we can go to Howard Seifer. He is a brilliant lawyer. He's the most distinguished school law lawyer in West Virginia. So be wary not to just take something at face value. If we question it, let's go get an expert. Okay, now the talking points. The talking points had to do with student achievement and accountability. It just has to be done at the local level and student achievement is going to be hammered and hammered and hammered. Another thing that came up, and this is something everybody in that room knows about, centralized control has never worked. It hasn't worked in any country on the face of the earth. It hasn't worked in the West Virginia school system. You know, we're down 48 to 49. We really worked hard to get there. So we have to change that mode of operation and put more control back in the government. So they kept talking about a new way of business in Charleston. And Mrs. Manchin got up. And I have to give her credit. I really did. It took courage to do what she said. She said major changes are occurring in Charleston. And she stated that the West Virginia Board of Education needs to improve its communications with the counties, the superintendents, and the boards. So that's a good deal. Okay, now, going back to the new way of doing business and the talking points of achievement accountability. Dr. Mark Arano, he got up and he said that the driving force for achievement and accountability has to be at the state board level. And he looked me square in the eye. I was sitting up front. And he said, "Even in intervene counties." He said that it came out that achievement should dominate all board meetings. That's something we haven't been doing for the last four years. It's a rarity for achievement to ever be mentioned. When we talk about achievement, and this is according from Dr. Mark Arano, we must have measurable outcomes. And he also emphasized the fact that no one metric will suffice. And he went on to say, hey, we've thrown out the West Test Two, A through F is on hold. Now it looks as if maybe even a part of Common Core or all of it will be thrown out. So we don't even know what rules for who be working on it. Okay, now I'm gonna talk about the vision statement. He said this is the most critical thing that the board could have. And he gave some of the criteria, and it's just common sense criteria like a businessman believes. The vision, it must be easily understood, clear. One person said it ought to be small enough to put on a T-shirt.
Right.
Okay. And it must be understood by all of the stakeholders. And everything that's done with achievement and accountability has to be driven with that vision statement. Now, they talked about, this, I thought this was pretty interesting. They said, "How many board members would it take to change the light bulb?" Now, I think everyone in that room said, "Five." I said, "Five." "No, no, you don't have to do that." And they said, "What the board does is to state in its vision what it wants to do and the superintendent is responsible for carrying that." Okay. So that is pretty much the vision statement. But we did coin this new word that I hadn't heard before. It's called informational leadership. And this is what's being repeated in Charleston. Information, informational leadership. And add two more words, by the superintendent. And it is stated that without proper information flows, the school system is dead. Okay, we played a game down there. Now, I don't like to play games. I turn off on games. I guess I'm a prude. Anyway, Howard Seifer got up there and he said, "Okay, we're going to play, are you as smart as a five-year-old?" The reason he did this, he said that boards have been hamstrung because they assume that they don't have authority, even in an intervene county. Like it or not, if there's a statute on the book, the state can't override the statute. So what he did, he talked about 14 unknown rules or statutes, laws, that boards can use. And I'm gonna go through seven of them as quick as I can. And he had multiple choice, had teams competing, and had someone keeping score and all this business. I think the person keeping score, he was confused because he was trying to use new math and he gave up the wrong answer, whatever. Okay, here's a question. Howard, that's a situation. Academic achievement lies at school. The board put that concern on agenda for a monthly meeting. And Washington passed to meet with the school's LSIC committee for a working session to discuss performance issues. You have multiple, four, four choices. Okay, is that true or false? Well, the answer is true. Under West Virginia Code 185-14A, and this is in this book right here on page 114, we can do that. And it's non-negotiable. Okay, the board decided to develop an academic improvement plan for the school. Now, this one, I was wrong on. I silently voted. It bypassed administrators, plural administrators, to get needed information from the faculty center. Okay, did the board have the authority to do that? Yes, the board has the authority to do that. And that's his statute 18. And you can read, go to page 114 and that will get you to the rest of it. Okay, the board decides that a faculty and staff at the school in question, this is a hypothetical school, contribute to the problem. And it decides to review all personnel practices to determine effectiveness in addressing student achievement. Now, does the board have that authority? Multiple choice or question? Yes, it does. We have the statutory authorization to do that, no matter what we may be told we can't do. Okay, now, as part of an aggressive pursuit to improve academics at school, the board decides to invite parents and students at the school to attend the community forum to give input and attend board meetings at which the school's form of status is on the agenda. Do we have the authority to do that? Yes, we do. It's in the statute. Now, here's where it gets kind of touching, because we had discussions about this. And some superintendents, they get a little bit nervous when you start talking about things like this. The board asked a superintendent to produce all recent achievement test results for the review. We've done that for two or three years and we haven't been given those results. Did the board act appropriately? Can the board request the superintendent to give those results? Now, Phyllis is from out of here. Yes. Yes, we can. That's a superintendent's responsibility, even in an intervene county. Okay, now, say we have a superintendent that elects not to bring the information to the board's attention. And he or she is working under the premise, well, I'm gonna hold back this stuff so I'm not going to disseminate negative information. Okay, did this superintendent violate state code? Violation of state code is a misdemeanor. Okay, we all sat around listening to people about that. The board is authorized to make that request and the superintendent is bound to carry out that request. Okay, when a board learns that a superintendent withheld achievement information, it directs the individual to add an agenda item to the next meeting to discuss a failed school or a school need to be improved. And require the superintendent to be prepared to make an oral and written report on issues and steps correctly. Does an intervene board have the authority to make that request on the superintendent with the expectations for it to be met? What do you want me to say? Yes or no? It definitely does. And I think that is about it. But the emphasis was, don't assume you can't do anything. Find a way to get it done. Now, in West Virginia, we hear that get it done phrase quite a bit. Now, when we talk about, can I say a little, tell a word? There's reference to the bill 2755. Okay, I don't know where you wrote it or not, something. Nine pages. But anyway, it's really interesting to look who sponsored that legislation. It was Mr. Boggs, Mr. Henshaw, Evans. I don't know whether he's a delegate or a senator.
Delegate.
And then Perry.
Delegate, delegate.
Hasden, Amanda, I know she's a delegate. And then this one I haven't even heard of. P E T H E L.
Bethel?
Yeah.
One of my former students.
Okay. And then Duke and Williams. Eight people sponsored that bill.
I think, Carl, that they realize, again, I will quote Mr. Henshaw. He says that with the state revenues, as they are and as they're projected, there are going to be many inter-county and multi-county schools in West Virginia. And they want this one to be worked out to its right. And there are some things need to be done. This bill goes a long way to making that happen.
I'd like to make a statement. Dr. Armour, a question. You've already referred. You talked about Bowls and Rice. And I've been to a couple of meetings where Bowls and Rice did some training this year while there. And they encouraged the board members to seek their advice when they had doubts. I had been told previously that we were going to have a discipline, a possible discipline being brought to us. And so since as a new member, I had not participated in it, I went ahead and called Bowls and Rice to simply ask them, would you please advise me as to where I would find proper policy and procedure to how to conduct such an hearing? I was informed by the secretary. I actually had her go back and check with the lawyer to verify. I was informed that because we were in intervention county, they could not provide me with any such information. I would have to ask the superintendent and he would have to ask them for it.
Let me play the informational leadership responsibility that I'm supposed to do right now.
Correct. And I did not receive it.
If, a little misconception on that, and I agree with what you're saying, because I know I was there when you said, and I called and I asked, an individual board member cannot go and ask as individual to the person. If you want legal advice, the board has to okay it, vote on it, then you would get advice from attorney, not individual board member.
Well, you know, Doc, it's really funny because Mr. Seifer at the meetings, now this wasn't legal advice. This was just something to ask about a code section or a policy number.
All right. I agree with you, but that's, do you want to talk about that?
I mean, really, that's all I wanted because I did not know exactly where to look.
He said an individual board member cannot call and ask for it.
But that was strange because Mr. Seifer at those meetings encouraged everyone to feel free to call him at any time.
I agree with you.
May I say something? I would have to agree with the superintendent, because the operative word here is the board. We as individuals cannot call. But if the board passes a motion that we want to engage Williamson Rice and say there's a question about whether or not we use Robber's Rules and Order, which we're all a key of use, guess who our new rep or delegate is? If it's Henshaw, then he is an internationally known parliamentarian. And he's on the Bowls and Rice staff.
I've spoken with Mr. Henshaw.
But Mr.?
But this has nothing to do with him.
No, let me go, since I'm just new informational leadership, which is a good word I'll use quite a bit there. First of all, on several things that, that, and one was the one of the board, that has to be a board, not an individual. The MIP project that I have with, that we're gonna get three quarters of a million dollars for the air conditioner and thing, it's in your CEFP. Okay, it's required. And that's who, that's who you are required to use is William and Shriver. You can shake your head all you want, but you have the right, if you want to, is make a motion right now that you don't want the three quarters of a million dollars. And I'll write the letter to William and Shriver and everything else like that, if you get the board to go with it.
But Mr. DeLano, now, let me say.
But it's in the CEFP and the state board.
But it's been proven, and you can double check this with Calvin County.
You don't have to do it.
That, I mean, we, they were utilized to do the CEFP, granted. But please double check this. Now, I'm not saying I'm going against you doing it.
I already did. I did.
Well, if you did, then you would know what I had been told. And that was that CEFP does not obligate you. You have a right to go to bid to anyone you wish after that. You're under no obligation.
Look at your advertisement.
What advertisement?
When you advertised in the paper, the CEFP, it states, "Any work done in this county on remodeling, brand-new schools, MIP projects, and everything, William and Shriver has exclusive rights to do the MIP project."
The MIP project is what you're saying. You're not necessarily saying the school building project.
The school, anything like that that's in advertisement.
Well, now, the state put that advertisement out. This board did not. That's why I disagree with Dr. Simmons. Because this board has never had any participation.
They approved it and everything else like that. You guys didn't have anything to do with it, but it's in MIP. They have exclusive rights to do this stuff in our county.
Well, I'm not calling you, I'm not calling you out. I'm just saying I've never seen that in writing.
But if you don't like it, send your, I've got the copy of the MIP.
I would like to see it. I've never seen that advertisement.
If you don't want to do it, then he can make a motion, you second it, we pass it. I'll write a letter to the SBA that we don't want the three quarter of a million dollars to put it up here.
That way, now, this, this.
Why would you do that?
Let me, let me say so.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying right now, your CEFP has it with the advertisement in it. I've checked all this out.
Well, I mean, I would like pretty much, no, I have a copy of the CEFP that I purchased.
It's in your advertisement. It's in your advert, when you advertise for the project.
But that, we did not advertise. Okay, let's get this straight.
It doesn't, okay, put it this way, when the state board.
I would like to see a copy, sir.
When the state board was running your, running the county, they advertised for the state, for your board here.
If it says that, all I'm asking is to see that advertisement.
They approved it, okay?
If it's there, I'd like to see it.
Achievements, we've been giving you statements, and I think Mrs. Minnick can be here and tell you too. We came to you all and told you how our schools are doing. Because I've asked you very nice to please make positive comments to our faculty, staff, and the schools and everything else like that. So you've been updated on our achievement programs and stuff that we're doing with our county. Now, I can't give you information that I don't have from the State Department on a test board.
And the state did not give it, and I was going to say something to that as well, because the state has also gone further. Dr. Armour made reference. They won't be giving any information for the next year. We will not receive. We received the last year late from the state. They held it up. They won't be giving the next year because they are stopping the AP regrading and smarter balance is coming in. And by their own statement to the Charleston Gazette, they will not be providing that information for the next year because they don't feel that they have the ability to.
We're still gonna do them, but they're not gonna count against us or anything like that.
Right.
The mission statement.
I agree.
The county does have a mission statement already. We went over with you all in your strategic plan because you made a question. You wanted to know what the three L's were.
But that's the strategic plan. That's why the board goes for one at the beginning.
That's the mission statement. I just want to let you know, we have a mission plan in case you get questioned on it.
We're highly intelligent. We understand that.
You know what I'm saying.
I'm not saying anything about your intelligence. I'm not saying anything about your intelligence.
Okay, well, then why repeat something that I'm not aware of?
I'm just telling you have a mission statement in the county.
We don't have a vision plan.
You don't have a vision. But you need to realize, we have it, in case we get interviewed again, we understand that.
I understand the mission plan and the strategic plan. We went through those three items. But according to the calendar provided by Bowles and Rice, each year the Board of Education is, and they have done it before, supposed to do board goals.
I agree with you on that part.
And have we done those?
All right. Now, another thing that you gotta realize, and I get to a point when I see somebody downtown that start blaming, we have almost a majority of back in this county. The only thing that we don't have is facilities, and we don't have personnel. Hopefully, we're getting personnel straight. Hopefully, by this time next year, or the beginning of school next year, I hopefully will get personnel back. That's my goal, to get personnel back.
I've gotta say to you, I've heard your ten percent statement on not having all the ten percent back. At least I've read what the paper reported you said. I'm not gonna say you said it. You did not say it to me. I read what the paper reported you said. And if personnel's only ten percent, I greatly disagree. That's a large portion.
It's not temporary. It's, it's, what we need to do is, we need to get off the state takeover.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Personnel's the next thing. But you can't keep blaming, we can't keep blaming the State Department for this and that and everything. We've got to move on, and we've got to make our, start making our own decisions and everything else like that. The vision thing, that's gotta be made by you guys, that's correct. So you have a vision statement.
There's no problem making our own decisions, and we are permitted to do so. I'm sorry, Paul.
You can make, you can make every decision.
I apologize for breaking you.
You guys can make every decision you want, except for personnel.
Well, no, sir, that just hasn't held to be true. How many questions do I have? And I realize it's a time thing. I'm not trying to point fingers, but it was brought up, and it's not a true statement. There are questions that I have had, that I have received no answer to, none whatsoever. It is very hard to progress when you cannot receive an answer so that you can come to the board informed and then bring it on the agenda to discuss it with the board members as a total.
Are these the questions you called me the other day and I answered before?
No, sir, there's a couple of emails, things that I asked, and I'm not going to, it's not on the agenda. I'll be happy to discuss it with you, send you details again.
Please do, sir.
But I have asked questions and received no answers. And, you know, I, for instance, the repealed policies. When I first came in in July, I, I had to wait until I could actually get to the website to see the repealed policies, which was quite a lengthy time, although I had asked several times for a copy of the policies to be repealed. I did receive finally a copy of the new policies, but I never received one of the repealed policy number. I mean, there are things like that, that once you're trying to progress and learn and trying to enter into a conversation as a complete board, not just one member, but as a complete board, because I value everyone's opinion. And I certainly, and there's a lot to learn, that if you cannot get that data, it's hard to progress on an issue. Now, that's my only point. And I'm certainly not saying that it's any one person's issue. It just has been an issue here.
A, a point, may I quote you, Mr. Devano? Now, you've said it twice. And this is what you said. If we don't go with Williamson Shriver, we'd have to give seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the, to the SBA.
If it wasn't for William and Shriver, you would not have.
My question was.
My question was to you. If you're upset with William and Shriver.
I'm not, I'm, I'm trying.
And everything else like that, then make a motion.
No. And please, please, sir, answer my question. May I quote you, and, and you said it two times, that if, if the business doesn't go to Williamson Shriver, we have to give seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the SBA. I'm just simply trying to understand what you're saying, so I will not be giving out wrong information. Did, did you stand with your statement?
William and Shriver is the one that's responsible for writing the MIP. It's in your.
That's not my que, my question, let me restate the question. May I quote you in, in stating what you said two times?
I don't want you to quote me at all, Mr. Armour.
Okay, so then.
Here's what I want you to do. If you don't like William and Shriver, and you're concerned with William and Shriver, then please, make a motion. If the board seconds the motion and you voted down that you don't want the three quarters of a million dollars, then let's just call William and Shriver, the state board and everything else like that.
So the Williamson Shriver has power over the, the SBA. And Williamson Shriver could go to the SBA using your words and protest, and the SBA would say, we're not giving you that money, you already committed. Now, something is.
I'm not gonna get any, anymore, Mr. Armour. I've told you what you need to do.
No, no.
If you want to do it, fine. If you don't want to do it, then let's move on.
Sir, if you make a, a comment, you ought to be able to.
And I did. And I did. I've asked you to make a motion.
No.
And you won't make a motion.
I'd like to go on the record.
Let's, let's move on.
Play to the, play to the thing, do what you want.
I've dealt with other architects in, in the state at another level, and we had certain architects that did our business. And they did a good job for us, but it was understood when we had a building project, that Daley McIntyre would be our architect. And this is an old, a longstanding practice in the state, and the idea that you go out and put a project out for bid and anybody gets to bid, that just normally is not, I mean, ideally, yeah, but that isn't the way most of it's done.
That's what the law, the lawsuit.
West Virginia code requirement for any capital project. As I was asking, I've not seen that advertisement. It may well say what you say. I'm not telling you it doesn't, I don't know. I would like to see it, please.
All I'm saying is, we went out and we got an MIP project.
I understand that.
If this board does not want the MIP project, please, let me know right now.
But, sir, I know you do. Now, my point.
No, no, I'm being accused, don't blame it.
I understand, but I'm not.
Well, let me just say one thing. Let me just say one thing. I'm being accused, because I went and got William and Shriver the business to do this. And I know that's what's being said. And I know what's been said at several other places around. If you're going to accuse me, accuse me upfront. But if you don't want the MIP project, then that's fine. Let's just move on, forget it, and I'll, I'll call William and Shriver and, and the SBA and say we don't want the money.
Well, let me say this, one thing I have to ask you about.
Because William and Shriver is responsible for doing the MIP project for us.
Or they're responsible for the SBA and the state legislations.
I think we've probably gone beyond the point of diminishing returns on this issue.
Well, I would ask you, if I could please, whatever.
Let's, let's just move on. I have not had a recent seven meeting this month, so therefore I can't give a report.
Thank God.
All right. Consent agenda, new business. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I think not.
Okay, a second?
A question. I have a, I have a question here about the field trips. Is that under here?
We have to have a second. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second so we can discuss it?
Well, my question on that is, maybe it's just, are we going to second to discuss it or second to approve it?
We need a second. We need a second to approve.
To discuss it or approve it?
To, to discuss it.
Yeah, discuss it.
To discuss it.
We, 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 we have a second to approve it. That opens it up for discussion.
Well, if we approve it, then we don't need to take a vote afterwards to approve it or something if we want.
We have a discussion. We can make a motion, you get a second, then you have a discussion, then you vote.
Who, who made the motion, Dr. Simmons?
Tom made the motion. Miss Steve made the second. All right, let's discuss.
Okay. I, I just have a question, Mr. Devano, and, and it's a procedural question. I notice in these field trips here, that six of them are way off in the future. And you have already approved them. My question is simply this. What is the policy that we're supposed to be following? And what comes, does it come to the board for approval before you approve it? Or do you approve it, then it goes to the board, and then it goes to the teachers? What are we supposed to be doing?
How would you like for me to do it? Do you want, use the board to approve them first?
Please answer my question, sir.
I am. Just give me a chance to answer it, will you?
You're not answering it.
Give me a chance. You interrupt me again. If you want, this board wants them to approve it first, and then I sign off on second, fine. But if you want me to approve it, knowing that the money's there and everything's fine, before you get them, then you, then we'll do it that way. You, as a board, tell me how you want to do those field trips. Those field trips has caused more problems in the last six months than anything I have done. If, if, I will sign them to show you that the money's there, and I think it's an okay field trip. Or I won't sign them, you approve them, then I'll sign them. How's the board wants to do it?
The board has to sign it.
I would like to know on, on the field trip, now, I mentioned this to you before. We know that we've discussed this, I asked you this question before. We have a sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar field trip, which is in May. I think that was a little premature. I do not see anything here that moves supplemental funds. And they're showing coming from the levy and operating budget. All right, I'm not finding funds in the levy supporting the excess levy. So we had a, a motion at the last meeting on how the field trips will be handled. And it was agreed that if the, you would have the authority, you being the superintendent, to approve field trips should they fall between board meetings. Now, these are so far in the future, I have to say to you, and probably you're handed a bunch of them, I understand you have your financial person there, you feel that that's covered. I can see how this can happen, all right? But I, I will say to you that I think anything in future months should be held, because any possible budget supplements needed should have been brought here before this is approved. And I do feel, I seriously, I can't find the money in the excess levy, any funds for this in the future, you know? And there's mention of Boag funds being used for one, it was down to three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that's in the future. So will there be three hundred and twenty-nine dollars in the future? I don't know that. I would ask that anything beyond the current month that you are aware of, you know, should be brought at the month, or at least the beginning of the month or the prior month before it happens. May is just too far ahead. Now, I really feel May is just too far ahead to approve it, I believe. And as I said, especially with such large amounts. I would like to have seen that come to the board.
So you're asking now that I sign nothing, and everything comes to the board, do they approve them, then I'll sign them?
No, sir, I'm not asking to change anything that was put on the last meeting. We were given permission by the entire vote of the board. Now, of course, any member of the board can change this.
That was.
That if a field trip took place.
I agree with you on that part. I'm not arguing about that part.
But future field trips beyond the next meeting.
The board.
You know, I think the board should see them, I really do.
Before I sign them?
Right.
Is that what, is that the consensus of the board?
I thought that was a policy.
The other agreed, agreed to it? Is that the consensus?
I'm not sure I agree to that, because some of these, whoever's planning that trip has got to know far enough in advance that they can get transportation. If they, some of these, I'm not sure if they're gonna try to get a tour bus to take them. That's gotta be scheduled. It can't be scheduled two weeks from now.
Well, they certainly don't, but Tom, don't you agree, Mr. Ratliff, that they don't find out about the trip the day before? I mean, it's always been the policy that these were brought to the Board of Education before they were taken and approved for funding. It's always been the policy. But we made adjustments because of the intervention staff.
We're trying to, we're trying to pull a reverse here, because we complained, because some of the teachers was running in right at the last minute and wanting to get trips scheduled.
Right.
And we said, hey, you ought to be able to schedule these down the road, and so we know.
That's right.
That's what we said.
So they could be brought.
And now are we saying, well, now they're scheduling them too far down the road?
No, I think it's being approved too far down the road.
Yeah.
May for six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, when we don't know that the money's in, in the, it's showing levy and operating budget, but it doesn't say how much in the levy. For, I mean, this is FFA, FFA manship judging contract. That's just a large sum of money. It was turned in, or at least the first signature is dated January twenty-second.
Mr. Devano, do you confirm these, these, these speakers of the six thousand prior to signing these?
I did. I did on those, and the principal said that they will have fundraisers, and they will raise the money, and they have the money to go on those trips.
This particular one they're speaking of is, is FFA.
FFA.
Is it, that is in the levy, or is that gonna be fundraisers?
I think that was part of levy and some of his fundraising money and some of his money that he has down here at the school.
But that's all been checked?
Yeah. That's about the principal, when I asked the principal, he said that the money's there. This is the one that he's going to the national meeting on that.
And this is something that they generally do every year. I, I, my daughter is part, not at the land judging, but they do typically go to, sometimes it's St. Louis, sometimes it's what looks like Oklahoma City here. I feel, I feel somewhat like Mr. Ratliff in, in a way, that, because I did make a point that I did not want people to start, you know, getting comfortable and lax with getting their, their trip requests in, because it had been an issue, where we were getting them really, really late. And, you know, I, I don't want to send a mismessage to them and, and confuse them. You know, we've told them to be timely with your requests. And I, I don't certainly have a problem with approving field trips as long as the funding has been checked. I mean, as long as the funding's in place, that's, that's the big issue as far as the revenue side of it.
That's why I put my name on it, to show you that it's been all okay to do it. If you don't want me to sign my name to it, that's fine and dandy. You, as a board, have to approve them first, and I'll prove, you keep shaking your head, no, which way do you want it?
I want to go with the policy. And the policy that we established the last time, although we didn't have three readings, and no other word considered. The policy was, if a field trip comes up before the board agrees, you're authorized to approve the trip. Otherwise, we would stick with the policy, and field trips would have to be approved by the board. That's the policy. Now, if we don't like the policy, let's change it.
Which it is. I just signed my name to it to show you that the money's there.
See, I, my interpretation of approval is, he's verifying on this slip that he has checked the revenue, and that he has given his green light for us to approve this. And I think we're taking the action in the proving. I don't think by Mr. Devano signing this, that he has said, you may take that trip.
Well, this is correct. And, and I think Mr. Devano is in a far better position to know whether there are funds for it than we are.
I think a little bit of confusion there. I agree with Misty. What we're doing right now is, I made a motion, you second it, we're in the discussion phase, whether to approve it or not.
Right, that's what I thought for you.
We vote to approve, but then it's approved. You know.
And it goes back to the, the person who has the field trip to say it's approved?
And I think where some of the confusion is, is whenever the board has not met, say, say there was a trip taken, maybe on February the eleventh, okay? We weren't to meet until the sixteenth, so we gave him authority to act on our behalf.
Exactly right.
What he's bringing to us tonight is saying, I checked the funds, they're there, now will you all approve? That's what I think he's doing tonight.
Even if I do sign the one on the February eleventh, it still comes back.
You'll tell us about, you'll tell us about.
It comes back in the packet through your approval.
That's fine. Right, that's what I understand. By him signing off on this, he's not saying you can take it without the board's permission. I'm not interpreting that way.
That's, that's fine. The only thing, you know, I've read this performance audit, read it, reread it, I almost have it memorized. Time and time again, what are we criticizing? Not following policy. So whatever the policy is, let's stick with it.[1647.91] And if, if the policy is interpreted the way Misty claimed, that's fine with me. But I don't want to have to...
Well, it's not Misty's interpretation, I'm just saying...
What's your motion to amend?
That was my motion to amend, but authority don't lie with Misty, it lies and rests at this Board's table. So, what the five of us agree on is what we need to do.
Again, I, I think in getting those approvals, Mr. DeVano is in a better position to know whether there are funds to cover that trip, whether this is a reasonable thing. And if you determined there wasn't, then you would sign.
Right. And we're, we're placing that responsibility on him to check that.
Well, then may I ask why the Great Wolf Lodge is going to be paid for, because it doesn't indicate either levy or operating budget or any other source of funding for eighteen, I think that's eighteen, I may be wrong, it's twelve hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents. But there's no indication whether any portion will be assumed by the Board. Does that mean that we are not going to be paying anything? That's all I want to know.
Do you want me, whether something comes up like that, do you want me to give an itemized statement from the person who's going to do the field trip, where the funding's coming, where the money's coming from?
Well, I think the funding should come from the Treasurer's office, there should be an indication if, if it's in the levy, or, I mean, it should at least say where the money's coming from.
When you get some, when you get something like that, I'll have it attached, an itemized statement where the money's coming from.
Well, I mean, certainly, I doubt that you saw that because you wouldn't have, your signature here would not have indicated that you had checked on the money. So, I doubt that you even saw that. I'm just saying that it's not indicating here any source of funding for the money. So, you know, that's kind of why I think when it gets that part of the future, if possible, and this is dated January twenty-third, you know, if possible, that it could be at least let the Board take a look at it. We don't have to approve it then, but at least know that it's coming. And little things like that might have been picked up on. I mean, I just think it's a little advanced knowledge of a trip being taken in May is not a bad thing to the Board. Now, whether we approve it tonight, you know, that is a, a different issue and not my fault. That's my only point.
Okay, any other items for discussion?
What is the exact motion?
Discussion.
No, your exact motion is approve the consent agenda.
All right.
New business.
Consent.
And you made a motion, seconded it, to have discussion. You had to have a motion, seconded it, you can start discussing, it's only consent agenda.
I thought Tom's motion was something.
Okay, anything else for discussion?
So, what we're saying, and see if I can make sure I don't confuse this, that we all agree, though we don't have any motion, that when we see Mr. DeVano's signature affixed to this, this simply means he has checked it out. In his best judgment, the money exists, but we still have the authority to say yea or nay about the trip. Is that, do I understand it?
So, I bet there would be nothing to move to, am I correct? That is, that is the understanding of how things are currently, is there a need to change it?
Probably should have put it in the policy, you know, have had it. My opinion is, I don't know what the Board's opinion is, but anything we do, we need to have it in policy, can stick with it. So, I have no problem with the fact that Mr. DeVano would fix his signature there just to verify that we have the money. But if that doesn't indicate he has authority to approve the field trip, that's the way I'm checking.
That's, that's...
Okay. And I think that's what Mr. DeVano said.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anything else under consent agenda discussion?
Under capital projects, I just want to note, proceeds from disposal of property, I see that four hundred thousand dollars revenue has been brought in. So, I take it that the deed was signed and that is already in over on Cedar Creek?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I have a question.
I just noted that, and I was just curious.
And she's finished.
And I also want to ask her, are we still planning on borrowing this Megan and QZAB? Is that still under that?
We've talked with the gentleman a couple times, and we just told him to hold off, we don't know what we want to do with that at right this time till we have the bids and everything in. That's, that's basically where we are right now. There's other people that want that QZAB money, that's why he's pushing it. It's not, we will not make a decision till we see what the bids are, where they come in, or there and that's like that. He said he would hold off holding that.
Last year, just so you know, Mr. Blankenship had made this statement to me in a public meeting that the QZAB bonds were in progress, and when I asked when the payment was started, he said it would start this November. Now, of course, things change.
The gentleman from QZAB, everything was turned in to him, and he has us down as getting the, the QZAB money. Okay, we can turn that down, or we can, I guess we can do less than what we have, whatever we have to do it. But I told him, and then I had Kinder talk to him, to tell him that do not, we do not want to make a decision on the QZAB money until we find out.
We're not deciding to turn it back in yet, we may decide to accept it.
He said he would hold it, I think, there's three counties right now that want the money if we don't want it.
Oh, I'm sure there's competitors for the money.
From those, there's low interest rates or no interest rate for fifteen years.
It is, but yeah, actually, I thought it was no, but, you know, that was my understanding. But QZAB, it may have changed over a period of time since I last researched it. However, my, that was a hundred thousand dollars a year, I needed a payment for ten years to put the Blankenship at the time, so he had agreed to it.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
You're right.
Well, I've got pretty good memory, I haven't lost it all yet.
You agreed to it.
No, no, please, that's one thing, I've, I've got to ask everyone, please quit saying you agreed to it. I sat here for three years. Timmons, you were there, Tom, you were there.
Well, I don't want to keep blaming somebody else.
Well, I mean, they were all there. No one agreed to it. The state agreed to it for the Board, sir.
The, there was an agreement that we got QZAB money.
That's right.
Period.
Exactly, and it was...
The QZAB money has been issued to us.
And, and it was signed by the state for the Gilmer County Board of Education, I understand all that, but please quit saying you agreed to it because I know that's just not a fact. Now, we had to agree to it, we were forced to agree to it, we must accept the fact that I'm just taking intervention.
You didn't agree to it, so you couldn't have been forced to agree to it.
Oh, yes, well, I couldn't, but...
The state agreed to it.
The Board did.
You were forced, you weren't forced to agree to it.
Well, no, we have to accept it and pay it back with our tax money.
I'm going to give you a soft one. The four hundred K that she referred to, if you go over on that road, there's a word encumbered there. Now, the legal definition, I won't even give it legal definition, I just looked it up in the dictionary. What, how does it apply to us, encumbered?
When the money is encumbered, we, like in other words, if we're going to save it for the new school.
Right.
We'll take that money, put it over and encumber it for the new school. So, that money is encumbered already for the new school.
Are there not bills already in place for that?
There, there, what, what happened was, I was going to say we obligated.
No.
There was money obligated for the new school, it was a million something, that the county was going to have to come up, plus the QZAB money was going to be in that too. When I came, I told you there, we had the PEIA money over here that we were going to have to pay, we'd have to pay. That sits over here in another fund. Don't want to touch it, don't want to enter any sign, leave it over here. We put money over here for the new school, which is sitting in that Fund Fifty-One, which is what we did, is encumbered that money for Fund Fifty-One. Can I move it out of there and bring it someplace else? Yes, it's just showing that that's going to be spent for the new school.
Now, Mrs. Brown, very specifically, to multiple questions, for which I was blamed for making her come to tears, and I really don't think it was my fault, however, I'll accept that, explained to me that the opaid liability fund and funds that Governor Tom had approved were returned to the general account. They were not in a separate fund, they were in fact perhaps broken out to a separate account number. But the checking account held the monies jointly in the, in the general fund.
You're correct. It's sitting over here in a, in account, yeah, it's our account.
And we've been spending, we've been spending quite readily, I mean, if my numbers are correct, we gave Williamson Schreiber, I think, six hundred and eleven thousand, plus I'm not too sure how close we are to the four hundred and some thousand for the land school for Williamson Schreiber. So, we've spent over a million, and I'm quite sure if I could get the detail that I want, I can prove it. That's fine, we've done it, it's done. Okay? So, that money is going downhill. By my calculation, after the land and everything else, getting it back, we had about five hundred thousand, somewhere in there. And I could be off a hundred thousand here or there, I'm not too far, I assure you.
I think there's about a man something in that fund right now for the new school.
After the four hundred thousand came back, that mean, now, we obligated nine hundred eighty thousand dollars according to the needs assessment for the Cedar Creek School to the SBA. That has to be paid in local share.
That's going to owe you Fund Fifty-One.
So, that money will be coming over, that revenue's not reflecting in One Fifty-One, it's a budgeted amount. That's the difference, you know? You can budget anything, I can budget ten gazillion dollars for anything I wish. The difference is, when it comes time to walk the walk, do I have the cash sitting there? And that's the revenue side. And we do not have the revenue side reflecting there. That's going to have to reflect there. Now, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars was obligated, I've not seen the needs assessment for this new school yet. The last one I saw was for Cedar Creek.
I don't, what do you mean a needs assessment?
A needs assessment from the superintendent to be approved by the SBA for funding to be transferred to this new school in Hay City. When Arbuckle was turned down, there was a needs assessment turned in, the Arbuckle site was turned down, and new one had to be prepared, that was for the Cedar Creek site. That's been turned down. Will there not be a subsequent one, subsequent one done for the new Gilmer County Elementary School that reflects the number of students, the architects, projected soft costs, et cetera, fees, the transportation effects, you know, it's, the needs assessment's done annually and they provide...
But you've got to realize too, that no changes were made in that school whatsoever. So, whatever was done at the beginning of the project to the end of the project...
But it's not the same project, Mr. DeVano, and that's why I don't understand.
It's the same school, it's the same building, it's the same criteria.
Well, no, no, that one was over on Cedar Creek and was going to have a sewage treatment plant and bus garages.
Now, you're getting it, let's...
Well, I mean, that was that project, this project is not the same project.
All right, what you're at, let's go ahead and let's just wait a couple months till the bids come in and everything else like that, and I'll come in and I'll tell you, this is what the school is going to be costing. This is what the bids are coming in for the new school. I have packets for you that you're going to have, that's going to go out Monday for bids, and it's going to be put in a newspaper for two weeks to get, get bids, have pre-bid motions and all that other stuff there. You're going to get all that. Let's wait till we get all that stuff in, then I can say, the school's going to cost you ten million dollars, the school's going to cost twelve million dollars. Our school be great, come in nine million dollars. Then we're going to know where we go, what much money we have, where we want to go from. But to sit here and tell you that you go, that school is a, the only thing different that you left up there is the road, what you said, and a couple other things up there. Move the school down here. Now, you're going to have new furniture, which you weren't going to have up there if we had to do that.
Well, we would have.
New appliances that you're going to probably have down here, you're going to have stuff, other stuff that's going to be in there. But the building is staying the same. We did not change anything architecture.
But I'm talking about procedurally documentation for the SBA, who is funding it.
She's talking about procedures.
I'm talking about the procedurally obligated funding requirements of the SBA to approve the twelve million something which is sitting in United Bank for this project as of November fourteenth, it was on the SBA website, all right? And it's showing a new elementary school.
Okay.
It's not labeled anymore Cedar Creek, it's not labeled Gilmer County Elementary. When are they going to have a meeting to approve that?
The SBA approved everything.
When?
See, the thirteenth PCS approved it. All right, PCS approved it, which gave all the bids, did everything they did for the, for what they did, but they think the school's going to cost us and everything we're going to hit. They gave their bid, Williamson Schreiber did their bid, but PCS went to the school board. Now, if you want that whole thing out, I'll give you that big document like that. And this is what PCS...
I'd just like to have a chance to come look at it, I don't necessarily need to give me all thousand pages, but I'd like to have that.
PCS gave the projections to the school building authority. The school building authority as of last week approved PCS's project.
How are they approving this without public meeting? That's what I'm trying to understand, how are all these meetings taking place?
There's no meetings taking place. PCS doesn't.
Well, I mean, apparently they're meeting to approve these documents, et cetera. How is it all happening without public meeting?
PCS works for school building authority.
Right, I understand that.
They did the projections, okay? They did the projection what it's going to cost.
Right, okay.
They approved it. They went to the SBA, the SBA approved it, they sent it over for us to go, and Williamson Schreiber, it's all approved, put it out for bid, okay? There are projection here, there's a projection here, we do not know what it's going to cost until our projection comes in, I think, May. We should know exactly when they open up the bids, exactly this is what the school's going to cost, who's going to get it, and who's going to build it.
Well, now, has Williamson Schreiber prepared another assessment of their cost on this school? What their charges will be?
Again, everything that they did at the school in Leaning Creek, the floor plans, the soft cost, everything they did is already there, it was done at Cedar Creek.
I hear that.
Okay? So, there isn't anything, there isn't anything extra they doing for the school? Because that was the thing, they had to pick the school up, they put it in the footprint of that building.
So, you're saying the initial six hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we have paid Williamson Schreiber, that we will not have to pay them another nickel for this school?
That's not true.
How is that possible?
No, no, there's going to be things that we're going to have to do here on out with Williamson Schreiber.
Five point six percent of the gross.
Right, precisely, that's what I'm understanding now. You know, I would like to see, and I have the form, what is it, A one thirty, I can't think of it right now, I will call you with it or get it sent to you and ask you for the form from Williamson Schreiber that they have to submit to the SBA. I would like to see that, because there will be additional costs for them.
There's always going to be additional costs. When each project's done, we're going to get a bill, have to send it to the SBA, and the SBA's going to have to pay it.
Hopefully, give us eighty-five percent.
There's going to be, there's going to be, there's going to be projects like that all the way through.
I understand that. And you see, but we paid for projects all the way over there that really were never done. And that's where I'm trying to understand how much of that, now, some of that they had done, they had done a site plan, they deserved that money. I mean, there's things that, that, there's...
There's some things they done over there, they drilled, they drilled the thing and stuff like that, but they, they got paid, they got paid, they got paid for and everything else like that.
But I want to know how much of that, I know that they received the total contract, name it. I want to know how much of that carries over.
I don't think they got a total contract, we don't know what, we don't know what it is.
Yes, we do, I've got that comment. Yes, sir, I know what the total contract was.
It's...
All right, anything else?
One more, this is an easy one too. We've mentioned QZAB. There's misinformation out about QZAB. So, let's put that to bed now. We understand it, the county has not been obligated to pay back any QZAB funds, because those funds are still in escrow, someone, you're saying that?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, that's an important thing, and we'll get out to the meeting.
However, you can't put it out, that we will not be borrowing that money.
I'm not going to put it out, I'm not...
I mean, right now, we're not paying the hundred thousand dollars a year debt for ten years that Mr. Blankenship said. I concur.
And I think you...
But there's somewhere along the line, there's going to have to be a decision made if we use that money or not, and if we have to use it or not. And probably May, June, you're going to know, this is the cost of the building, this is the money we have, if we need money, that's, that money's sitting out there right now. If we want, if we don't want it, we turn it down, it'll go to some other county.
So, we will see, this is our nine hundred eighty thousand local, this is, this is our nine hundred eighty thousand local, this is the amount the SBA has agreed to, do we need to use that million?
I've been putting him off for quite a bit.
Soon as we get the bids back, then we need to make...
We need to make a decision if you're going to use it. It's, what it is, is a pre-approval, is what you got right out there, sitting out there.
I understand that.
You use it or you don't use it.
But of course, it does bring to question in your mind, you know, just exactly how much were they over on Cedar Creek for the cost? I mean, my goodness, if we can't save a million on that road and the cost of, the cost of the sewage treatment plant, there had to be more overage than that.
But you've got to also look too, that if we went up there, you, you guys, the comments were made here, we're putting the shell of the buildings up there because you'd have to use old furniture, that, old...
Right, but that was never the original intent, I don't think anyone ever understood that to be the original intent.
No, I agree with that. But now, moving over here, you might not have to put any used stuff in, it might be all new. It will be all new, from what I'm saying.
Well, let's hope we're not going to waste anything that's sitting in the...
Again, there's a lot of confusion and misinformation, because I was on that planning committee,
and except for the cage for the wildcat, we thought we had everything covered in that school.
Right, that was my understanding, that you, that you did understand that all of that would be paid for.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it brings to mind now, just exactly how far wrong was it, Bill? If it was wrong, the amount for the road, if it was wrong for a sewage treatment plant, and yet, we still have to borrow, and we may have to borrow that million, we may have to.
So, remember now, up there, you're gonna be this much in the hole before you start it, and you're gonna have to give up a lot of stuff to get to that point.
Yes, but see, we didn't know that. No one knew that.
I know, I know, but that's what I'm saying.
And that's my question, how far in the whole world were before we started? Had to be more than a million dollars, obviously.
Well, if you look at PCS, it was more than a million.
I take it.
Well, there were a lot of things done, that, you know, it was, it was a hybrid situation. We had responsibilities, and yet, we didn't have, we needed information, which we didn't get. We got a lot of misinformation, so here's where we are today. We're, we're still trying to figure it out.
Still begging for it.
Are we ready to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor of our motion signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. As have it. Okay, let's move on. Superintendent's information, action.
All right, facilities, uh, Dr. Simmons talked about a meeting. We, I met with, uh, with Perry and I met with the, uh, faculty senate person, uh, over Troy. We wanna plan a meeting for the twenty-sixth, the sixth, sixth to seventh, and how we wanna do it is, she's gonna, we're gonna get a letter together, send it out to all the parents, uh, that are there. We're also gonna put a little self-assessed envelope at the bottom of it, and a section of a question that they have, that they would like for us to answer. So, we'll have a, an answer when we get there. Uh, Mrs. West will go ahead and start the meeting out, and she wants to start out, make it as much as positive. The reason we went on the twenty-sixth, we'll know about the twenty-seven fifty-five with, uh, that, I'll know exactly. Once we get that, we're gonna meet and find out what, uh, positions we have. The positions that are right there, we know, is third grade, fourth grade, and, uh, title one. Uh, by looking at the enrollment that we're gonna have over there, if everybody goes over that enrollment, we'll probably need a new kindergarten, uh, a new preschool, and a first grade. Uh, the other ones are just leaning on here and there, and by really, they do not have a fifth and sixth grade, so that'll be positions of fifth and sixth grade. Uh, we did, uh, asked our attorney to have him stop posting the positions over there, because those positions come to us right after Allen Bridge teachers. They're our positions, and if the people decided, Troy, they don't wanna go, who they're gonna bump in the, in the RIF list, they're gonna get first priority over, over positions over there at that school. So, that's the way it is, and, uh, once we do that, and once we meet and decide the positions, I wanna meet with the Troy staff, and start with the most senior person, go down the list, are you going or you're not? And if they're gonna go, I'd like for them to sign a little contract that they're gonna go, give it to the superintendent of Lewis County, the grant provider, his board, hire. So, I know to pull my, my people off of the RIF list, and, and so, we won't have all that confusion, confusion here. And then, the twenty-sixth, if somebody stands up, says, well, is my teacher going or not? We can say, yeah, that one's going, this one's not, and, and things of this nature. Uh, also, on the twenty-fifth of March, we're gonna have, and I think it came out of, uh, the strategic plan, we're gonna have all the fourth and fifth graders, uh, in the county get together, go to Glenmore State College, uh, have a, a day that they can get together, play with each other in the gym, swim, go back and forth, and then go to the ensemble that they're having there. So, that'll be, that'll be then. And again, uh, I got some criticism that I'm trying to steal kids from Troy. My answer is, they're still our students, they still belong to Gilmore County, they have the right to go with the rest of the kids up here and enjoy that day. And it's a, it's a good day for everybody, uh, to get some information from each, each child and everything else like that. So, that's, that's, that's that right there. Now, I have, the meeting date that I wanna do is change. Uh, on March the sixteenth is our regular meeting date.
Sixteenth?
Yeah, that's our regular meeting date. By the fourth or fifth of March, we should have our levy call, and what the levy rates are. On the sixteenth, I want to meet probably half hour before we meet the regular meeting. You accept the levy rates, then we got a recess from that meeting, and come back on April the twenty-first, come out of recess, and approve the levy rates, adopt the levy rates, and then we're done. That's all you gotta do on that meeting. Just the one thing I like to do on, on the twenty-first, at, at eight o'clock in the morning, we just meet up there, go in, go into the meeting, approve the, adopt the levy rates, and then meeting's over, go on.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we can do that at eight o'clock. That way, everybody will have the whole day, and we won't have to do anything.
Twenty-first, eight o'clock?
Yeah.
No.
No, no, it's the board. You have to have a board meeting. Yeah, and then adopt the levy rate, so that, that's-
It's on the twenty-first at eight.
Yes.
Twenty-first at eight.
That's, that's in, that's in the code, we have to do that. All right, here's a letter that, uh, I'd like to get permission from you all, and give me a motion, oh, we wanna sell two school buses. We've just got a brand new one coming in, we get money for a new one next year. Once we sell these school buses, we'll have enough in the fund that we can purchase two brand new school buses for next year. And that's what Joe wants to do. So, I'd like to have a motion, and second to go ahead and, and sell these buses.
Okay, we have a motion.
Let me read the thing, I'd like to read this part.
Will we go to the next one while you read it? I know some people reaching to go to the game.
I think our duties as elected officials take precedent over the game. Hundred and fifty-two thousand miles.
Your motion to approve. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor of the motion signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. As have it.
Now, I have personnel there, and what, I, I just wanna let you know, the rest transfers and everything, once we get everything straightened out, again, I know you don't have personnel, but again, I wanna keep you informed of, uh, who we have on the transfer list, who's still gonna be on the transfer list, who's gonna be transferred, and give you that information, and as soon as all that settles down, uh, and the state board sends me back my agenda, that it's all approved, I'll sit down with you all, and so you guys will have an idea what, what that's all about. Okay? Uh, workshop, I've asked Howard to call, which is in our exit audit, that he has to provide, uh, workshops for yous aboard. I've asked him three or four times, you saw the email that's sent out, I have not got any response whatsoever from him at all.
What, what, what would these workshops cover? Since you're asking for them, you ought to be able to define that.
He, he told me when we talked, that I said, you gotta do it for the exit audit. He said that there were ones that he did, for the other ones that Grant came in and that got off of state takeover, and that he wants to work out the same thing. But I think what we need to do, and we can do it if you want to, and I, I suggested that Dr. Simmons, myself, and Heinlein, Mr. Heinlein, and, and Howard sit down and come up with it.
With the topics.
With the topics, and then, what I like to do is take those topics, bring it back to you all, and say, these are the topics, are they okay, or any other topics that you want?
That's very good, thank you.
I'd like, I'd like for us to, to start more as a board to, to form our, form our vision. I mean, I was just so inspired this weekend by the speakers that it's gotta be more, even though day-to-day things are important, and yes, we have to look at everything on this, and we're held accountable for it also, but we gotta, we gotta kinda move, move forward into some bigger ideas if we want bigger things to happen in our county. And along with those workshops, um, you know, um, I think it's just really important that that be included, not just information that other people think we need to be told, or fed, you know, and I'm not meaning that in a negative way. But we need to create some of our own workshops. I mean, this board, uh, as many before I've served with, is pretty capable of doing a lot. And I think what I learned mostly this weekend is, is we've, we've asked a lot of permission to do things that we were always entitled to do.
That's right.
And that's our, uh, we just have to educate ourselves to know what our rights are as board members, and not always be stuck in that permission state. We, that's why I think that the vision workshops and things like that, I think we need to get busy with that.
Is there somebody down there that you saw that you were impressed of, that was a speaker, that I can request Howard to send him to us to sit down, or you just-
Well, the, the lady that was there was from New, she was New Jersey, that's not feasible, but, I mean, anybody that Howard would recommend, I would, I think it would be great, you know, as far as developing our vision.
Maybe what I need to do is get Howard to call, Howard super, to go talk to Howard to call, and see if we can get him motivated that way.
Right, because I just think that we got too much talent on this board to, to spin our wheels and not do something productive.
Well, Missy, there are a couple of things that I see out here as priorities. Number one, we have to be concerned with our achievement. Our academic achievement, our students are competing with other students, if they're to have a life, they have to be prepared. The second thing, we have to do a better job at recruiting the very best teachers that we can for our classrooms. And I know there are shortages out there, but we have to maybe try to figure out some ways to enhance some opportunities for teachers, because if the teachers aren't there doing the job, we as a board can sit and talk about buildings and all the things we wanna talk about, and the job's still getting done. So, you're right.
Right, and they, they may, they stress the point that if we make our agendas about day-to-day things, that's all we accomplish. That, to Carl, you would agree that, that they, they stressed how achievement should be the focus of a lot of what we do, it should be at the top of our agenda. And, and, you know, and our vision needs to be, not get caught up on trivial, personal things, and, and just do something productive.
But, Missy, don't you agree that it's necessary to have the information?
It is necessary.
I mean, we cannot get the achievement data.
It is necessary.
It's very difficult to move forward.
Yes, it is, it is.
We have, we have to choose there from the state, we have got that.
We have to be informed, we have to be informed.
Exactly, and if they're already talking, they don't have the data, that ties right in.
We're gonna have to go and inspire the state. Because the way they're operating, they're-
They're not gonna do anything.
Well, they've switched, and now, uh, there's a real good chance that Tom McCord is probably gonna get down the drain. Get all the millions and millions of dollars.
You keep asking about our math money and everything else like that. We got together with our math people down here, and we're gonna have them work about three or four days in the summertime to come up with a curriculum that we can give to the type of student you talked about, to see if we can help them out, I'm not gonna tell you that deal with that.
And you know what? We gotta just do a better job at the earlier intervention, we gotta do a better job at the elementary level. We do, because, you know, we're expecting big things of the teachers, and I know Carl's concerned about the, 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 uh, career center. But those children, as Carl has stated, and Dr. Simmons, and Norman, everybody has stated here, they need to be ready when they get there. And, and, you know, the things that we can help them with down there and strengthen, if there is growth, I think that's success at the career center, if we can see growth. You know, from where you get them to where they end up being, just like Ms. Starkey used to say, she'd give her kids a newspaper, and she would assess what level they were on, and if at the end of the year, they were better off than they began, you know, that needs to be recognized also.
We also wanna come back to talk to you about the literacy grant that we just received. We're finally getting the information and, and books and stuff like that, but we want to make, because that's what you're right, we're starting down at the preschool.
We have to start down low.
That's what we're doing.
Well, I think these, these are very important issues. Uh, we have those who wanna go on to, uh, college and universities, they need to be prepared for that. And then, we have some, uh, children who, if we can teach them to read the newspaper, uh, read correspondence that they get, and intelligently respond to it, we may be doing them a great favor.
That is the beauty of American education. We educate every child. We don't follow the European or the Asian model that takes only the superior and gives them a status that they can, you know, achieve and go forward. We take every American child, and the goal is to try to make them as much as they can.
And you know, that's been pushed down our throats for about eight years, because when we go to superintendent's meeting, the age of the tree, and all this other stuff.
Oh, I would say sacred to that.
Yeah, well, let me, let me go ahead and get some other ones you're gonna have to vote on, for the, the adjustment to our, our calendar for the days that we missed. Right now, there's two ways we can go, and the first one is, is to take spring, take spring break completely away, and then add a couple additional days on at the end of the year. The next one is to save spring break and add the days on at the end of the year. My recommendation to you all, you can do what you want, keep the spring break, and then add them on at the end of the year. We're already up to June fifteenth. Now, it's up to you all how you wanna do it. If you wanna take the spring break, then our students will get out a little earlier. But I don't wanna fringe on people's, uh, vacation times or what they scheduled on that thing, but that, that's up to you all how you wanna do that. The other thing that I really wanna talk to you about, we're gonna have a meeting on the calendar, the twenty-sixth, just to get input from the community how they want it. There's some things that we can change in that calendar that might help us next year if we have snow days. And as long as we can get into that, and then we come back in March, the twenty-seventh or fourth, and we meet again, uh, on the calendar. And that's when we'll have a calendar there, and then, when that committee meets the calendar, the calendar's gonna come back to you all, and then you either approve it or deny it, or whatever we need to do.
How many study days have we taken this year?
I think we're up to eleven. I think we had six there, six, and then we had already six built in, and then we had to add on to the, end of the school year. So, what's, how do you wanna do this? You wanna take spring break and then add them on at the end of the year, or do you wanna save spring break and add them on at the end of the year?
Are you aware that there's a lovely article in the paper about this?
Huh?
Are you aware that there's a lovely article about you and April about this?
Yeah, because I, I quote, I don't really wanna take spring break, that's, was my opinion.
I know, but I mean, if, if we vote on it now, if Heather says that, uh, she will be asking the parents tomorrow night.
Did I put pressure on you?
Oh, no.
Mr. Devine, uh, do we need to consider the, um, the public's, uh, input before we say, when we're there? Or you, what you're presenting to the public tomorrow night is what this board's proposing?
No, the one I'm presenting tomorrow to the public tomorrow is the calendar for next year.
For next year.
Because the law says I have to have two meetings with, with the county, and then, talk to them about what they want. I'm not gonna have any proposed calendars, and then when we meet on the twenty-fourth of March, I'll have what their input was, and this is what it is. And then, whatever they agree or come closer to agree. Now, the real problem's coming up right now, is matching with Calhoun. Not only Calhoun, I've got Louis.
Yeah.
Upsher and Barbara.
Right.
So, we're trying to juggle all this together, and we've met with Louis a couple times. Uh, Calhoun, uh, I don't know, they, our calendar, we looked at our calendar, uh, next year. Now, Calhoun, from my understanding, is took the spring break away from their, their staff, but, uh, you know.
May I say something as a teacher, and I know I'm not supposed to, but I'd like to say something, and that is, students are ready to go home, and they do not learn at the end of the year. They're, they've taken their test, they're through, the teachers are through, they've already got their grades on, and they'll sit there and learn nothing in those days. Sorry.
Or, it, it does, if they've already, if Calhoun is already, they're gonna go during spring break.
I was not surprised, I wasn't, I asked how we were gonna do it.
They should've, they should've worked with us on that.
Correct.
But now that they've already done that, then, I mean, we're right back where we were trying to schedule days, snow days and everything, so we could, uh, keep those kids as many instructional days down at the career center as possible. Now, if they're already, and we're almost, my opinion is, we're almost, well, well, we gotta-
Here's another former teacher, and I know that when spring fever hits, it hits. There's a time, I think psychologically, when schools should be out, and I don't care how many more days you go. Uh, they're really non-productive.
But see, I got a comment last night, once it all takes spring break, of course, I might not have any plans, and I had somebody who says, no, I said, I would like to have a break. You know, the snow, and things like this, and everything else like that, that break's scheduled, then I guess somebody else knocked one of my directors, and said, look, I've already planned my vacation, the spring break and, and stuff, and so-
Didn't this discussion come up last year when we were talking about vacation?
Yeah, I'm in the middle of grievance. We're in, we're in the middle of grievance. We are.
Yeah.
Well, you know, none of us asked for this weather. None of us asked for this weather, and, and we all have to make accommodations for the unseen, and it doesn't always work out ideally, but, you know, I think we're certainly, uh, under the gun to put in a certain number of instructional days, and you either do it early or you do it later. And I agree with, uh, this, uh, former teacher, when you get to a certain point in the spring, uh, they may be there in body, and they may have their eyes focused, but it's not what they're focusing on classroom.
The thing of it is too, a couple more snow days, I'm back here at the next meeting, gonna adjust the calendar again, and you might have to take it then.
And that's for Calhoun, we're standing up to leave, I mean, they were already up to eleven, and, you know, they know they're going to have more.
They put all their makeup days right at the end of the year, and we didn't, we, we put them into the, into the thing like that. What I like to do next year, if we have this on our spring break, is give them an outline calendar for Good Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then put three O.S. days on the end. So, if we have, if we do not have the weather we had this year, that they still can take this three S. day. But they know right now that they have three days that they're gonna actually lose, because that's the first days we take. Now, that's the way I like to look at the calendar, but I'm not supposed to have any pre, pre notions about the calendar for next year. So, don't quote me, defend me.
Not yet, what's that?
What's the last day that they can go in June?
Thirtieth.
How, as far as graduating seniors, how is this, how's this gonna affect them?
Stays the same.
They have to go to the fifteenth off of, no, it's, it remains the same.
We look at that, it says it goes on your original calendar.
Goes on the original.
Now, where we're having the thing too is testing, that's why we gotta make a decision now. Because testing goes back so many days that we can move our testing, they keeps following us out.
I think any decision you make, it's gonna affect somebody.
Yes, it is.
They've already, people, you know, planned their vacation just soon as school's out. You know, and if you go ahead and run it up the end, well, you're gonna fringe on somebody, if you take it during spring break, you're gonna get, you're gonna get-
But we got kinda way out on the end, because of the beginning of school year, I asked the teachers and the staff to tell their parents to not make it, take vacation days in June. So, and I think everybody knows that we gotta go, we can go to June thirtieth, no matter what. And you're right, we're gonna, we're gonna step on somebody somewhere, going, what, you know?
And I think, I think Tom made a real good point, you know, with us trying to stay in, in line with Calhoun. You know, and we may end up, you know, like you said, you may end up bringing it back to us. But I, you know, I'm kinda, I'm kinda feeling like Dr. Simmons and, and, you know, uh, teachers in the room, that they do, they do lose interest there towards the end of the year, and a lot of times, they're just in the rooms kinda watching movies, or, you know, you know, I don't know, you know, that end of the year, they, they just are not focused.
If they don't know that we take the spring break.
I think it's a combination teachers and students, or teachers.
Right, right, that's true.
And maybe the teacher more so than the students.
Well, Mr. Superintendent, has this, uh, solved your problem?
No. I need a motion to tell you to adjust the calendar, how you wanna adjust it.
It's like, uh, Sir Roger Decoverly was asked to settle a dispute between Will Winmore and Tom Touchy over rights to a fishing hole. And he deliberated for some time, and he finally reached a conclusion that there was much to be said on either side. So, that's kinda like this issue, there's much to be said for either way you go.
Personally, if you don't take the spring break and let them have it, and if I have to come back again, then we have to look at this, but it would probably give us, and, and maybe send an email to the teachers, do you wanna keep spring break, or you don't? We could always come back and adjust the calendar, we can always do that. I mean, I mean, that might be, that might be thing, but you know, with our luck, it'll be fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
And we still have to make the decision. But, I mean, we could, really, I would keep the spring break, because right now, and then go to the fifteenth. Now, that's my, you guys can do what you want. That way, if something happens down the road, then we might have to come back and have to make an adjustment to the calendar, or we can do it this way, and then, we hear a rumble that, hey, hey, why are we going so late? Okay, you guys, faculty senate, we're gonna meet, you guys vote how you wanna do it. You wanna take spring break and take the days, maybe three days off, four days off the spring break, but then again, we could miss four or five more days.
I'm smiling myself, as this is laughing, that when I hear discussions about things, I, I catch myself, when I hear people say things, I say, oh, you know, it all relates to the two of there, and I mean, it relates to the days, but I wouldn't, wouldn't do that.
Bill, do you lead us to-
Do you still need that message?
All right, do we have a motion one way or the other? Do I hear a motion that we take away the spring break? to make up our days?
I, I would make, well, if you want a motion, I would make a motion. I thought, I was tracking what, uh, our superintendent said. That he was going to consult with people, including the teachers and people in the community, to try to come up with a solution.
So do we want to make a motion to table it?
That's for, that's for next year. That's, I'm meeting with him next year's calendar, not this year.
This, this is the spring break versus.
We're gonna have to make a decision because of the testing thing right now. They're asking us to make the decision.
What do you recommend, Mr. Superintendent?
My recommendation is keep the spring break and go to June fifteenth, right now. Okay? And if it starts causing a rumble within the system, then let me take, you can always come back and adjust this. You can always, you have all the right to adjust your calendar anytime. But we can come back and adjust it. Well, tomorrow, we might not have school tomorrow. Then now, we're back with another day or two. And we might, two weeks down the road, you know, we might have snow days, and might lose a couple days.
So you need a motion on solving this?
Spring break is, uh, Easter, to be in April.
I make a motion, but except for your recommendation of the superintendent.
All right, we have that motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes got it. Superintendent, you got it.
I advise you, that all the teachers that voted on, the majority wins.
Yep. If, if it gets to a point, if we hear the rumbling, then we'll do it.
You can't please everybody. I think you have to listen.
You totally operate on so much rumbling. I mean, at that point, someone has to make a decision.
All right, we are now down to, uh, item number seven on the agenda adjournment. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Say have a second. All right, Bill, a motion and a second. We now stand adjourned.
We move the delegation, so you can leave early, and you stay the whole time.
The least I stayed was to find out that, but there's some things about that, that extending, that I, I met with a problem. And Bill, both, is that we have college starting. If you extend it into college, our teachers can't get it. It can't go to the prices. That's another thing they have to.
We're gonna have to work, we have to start worrying about that. Take, take your packet. That's what's coming out in the paper the next couple days.
It starts with the fourth, fifth, tenth.
That's right. And they can't go. If your teacher goes down.